I just got one thing before we start. Just so everybody's aware of Granby's having a problem with trees. I'm talking about dead trees along power lines. Mr. Martin just informed us we're not having a special town meeting until the 28th of October. I think by then, most of the leaves will probably be down. So if anybody's listening to us tonight, I highly recommend you drive around the streets and look at the trees. The ones that have leaves now are alive. The ones that don't have leaves are dead. And you're not going to know the difference by the time we get to the 28th of October. And we have a lot of trees that need to be taken down. So a pitcher's worth of thousand words. So I recommend when y'all are driving around, look at the trees around the high tension lines. That's all I have. Okay, Mr. Martin, what do you want to lead off with?
Well, just one, a good bit of housekeeping.
Yeah.
At the September 3rd meeting, you signed a encumbrance letter for the general fund. And one of the numbers listed on there was incorrect. If you look at the far right column, the third number down, it was only listed as $4,085.23 instead of $40,851.23. So I need you to sign three copies again with the correction.
You can sign these, Jack.
You said we could sign three, Ma?
I have three.
I thought we had one, two, three for us.
If you want, you can. I'm just saying that there was a mistake in the number. And, you know, if you want to take a vote, you can.
I'm going to make a motion that we sign off on. Article is listed to correct the error that was made our last meeting.
I'll second your motion, Paul.
Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye is unanimous. And our first appointment is until 6:35. You've got another minute.
Yeah.
It was three.
Just three.
Did you sign one too many?
No, he signed the one that you gave us. It's like I was going to throw mine out there. The Jen told me she had some coming.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough.
No, I thought you were going to sign yours, mine, his. Now we're just swapping back and forth.
Wouldn't have made sense.
I didn't know there was going to be extras.
Because you like keeping paper.
No, I don't like keeping paper.
No, I like keeping paper.
No, he likes keeping paper.
No, I keep paper or something, but that computer's full.
So as I was mentioning earlier, there is a person who would like to come in to executive session with the board to talk about an issue. Does the board have any problem trying to schedule it for the next meeting?
I don't know.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, and we'll address other HIPAA-related stuff at the same time. Okay. Is it 6:35, Mr. Chairman?
It's 6:34 on my computer.
Well, by the time he walks up, it'll be 6:35. Mr. Abelson? Dr. Abelson?
We didn't get him a chair.
No, usually one of the blue ones is done.
Hi. Hi, I'm Herb Abelson from the Board of Health. We all got a scare in Granby at the end of August when we thought there was a Tripoli-infected horse in town. And we subsequently found out that the horse was not in town. In fact, stabled in Salem, Connecticut, and was never infected in the town of Granby. So the critical designation from the state was reduced to moderate. And the unfortunate designation came out of a mistake just in bookkeeping at the Tufts Veterinary School. But the Board of Health has really reflected on this, on the seriousness of Tripoli and the potential that we will have continuing outbreaks over the next three to five years in Massachusetts because that's what history would tell us from previous outbreaks. So what we would like and what we recommend is that we join the Pioneer Valley Mosquito District, which would provide monitoring of mosquitoes in our area, which would be very important to know whether there are any infected mosquitoes in town. Now, infection can... Lee. Lee LaLonde is another member of the Board of Health. Tripoli can occur in birds as well as in people. The virus in birds is usually not one that is a problem for people. But monitoring for Tripoli in our mosquito population would be very important. The Pioneer Valley Monitoring District, Mosquito Monitoring District, requires that we have a warrant at a town meeting that, in fact, is passed by the town before we can join the Pioneer Valley Mosquito District. So that's what Lee and I are here to talk to you all about, that we think that this would be a judicious use of town resources to join the district. The district right now requires a $5,000 payment to join the district. And I believe, I don't know it absolutely, I believe that's an annual payment. I also have the sense that if our threat level rises from moderate to the critical level, that additional resources are available from the state. And in fact, I think a couple of state representatives came by and spoke to you directly, didn't they, Lee?
Yeah, I met with two of our state reps, the second and third Hampshire District reps, stopped at the pharmacy to talk to me about this. The truck spraying would be a no charge. Aerial spraying would be an excessive payment out of towns if they decide to do that. But they'll do truck spraying for nothing.
There were some surrounding towns that... That's a positive rate for Tripoli, is that correct? How close were the surrounding towns?
Yes.
It might be something, and I'm not sure about East Long Meadow or not. I did speak to a Robert Oliver at the Department of Public Health out of Boston. He believes we're going to have a three or four-year cycle going forward, that this is going to become very problematic, and then it would naturally tail off. But it's not a one time... This is not the only, according to him, the only time we're going to be facing this. It should be with us for three or four more.
On the part of the surrounding community, still, are we going to be the only ones spraying? Are they going to be spraying? Are they going to be... I'm just trying to say, because if we're in the middle of all these other communities, they don't do a thing.
Right.
Why should I be doing all this work? And then, because I don't think mosquitoes are going to stop at the border and say, hey, it's Granby, we're not allowed in there. You know, or like you said, the birds. You know?
Here is the schedule.
But all I'm saying, I'm concerned that if we go forward with joining this district, and nobody around us does it.
The people around us that have joined are Agawong, Bernardston, Deerfield, East Long Meadow, Hadley, North Hampton, Palmer, and West Springfield. So not everyone has joined. And I guess you could say, well, what if an infected mosquito turns up in those other places and no one's there to test it? Well, it's like the tree falling in the forest, isn't it? Does anyone hear anything? I'm not sure that's a good argument. We're interested as a Board of Health in the health and welfare of people here in Granby. And I think we can best serve the people here in Granby by a monitoring program which helps to determine whether we have infected mosquitoes in town. And if they are in town, as Lee said, truck spraying can be done. And if it really reaches a critical level, that is, an infected individual, whether animal or human, then aerial spraying would be undertaken. So I think it's absolutely judicious and is not a stretch at all in my mind that we should be monitoring for Tripoli. This is a horrible disease. It's untreatable. If people do develop the neurologic complications, the chance that they're going to die or be severely affected is very high. So I think a $5,000 amount to try to protect the people in Granby as best we can from this pernicious disease is warranted.
I did some research on this when I knew it was on the agenda. And I would agree with you, monitoring is a great thing. But from what I read on mass.gov, if you join that district, the district makes the decisions when to do what and how to do it. I don't think that's a good thing for Granby. Granby is one-third surface water, okay? And according to the EPA, the agent that they're using, and I can quote it from the EPA, "Do not apply over bodies of water, lakes, rivers, permanent streams, natural ponds, commercial fish ponds, swamps, marshes, estuaries." And if we're not going to have any say, I have a problem with that. This year, and I don't know how many other years, Mr. Martin has taken the incentive, when we have Charter Day, to have spraying done by the trucks in Little Charter Day so there's no mosquitoes. I don't have a problem with spraying if it's selective and controlled, but I don't want to give up the control. I mean, so I think it's something that we might have to look at. Monitoring, I agree with you. But to give somebody else the control of what goes on in Granby, I disagree with.
I'm not sure we're giving up any control.
According to what I've read at mass.gov, the district takes over and makes the decisions.
And also, your comment about water, I'm not sure is correct either.
Oh, I quoted?
Well, you may have quoted it. But these agents have very short half-lives. They are not toxic in water supplies. They are not toxic to wells. They may affect dragonflies and fishes. So people do say that if you have a small pond, not a large pond where these things degrade very rapidly, if you have a very small pond, you probably ought to cover it. There's been essentially no toxicity from these agents over many, many years. So I'm not sure you're correct or what you've read is correct.
Well, I can tell you what's on the mass.gov side is dated 2006. I can tell you what's on the EPA side is dated 2011.
Yeah, well, this is 2019.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And there's nothing about that on the mass.gov side that changes the way they do things from 2006.
We can certainly be in touch with Mr. Oliver at the Department of Public Health to clarify these issues.
I agree. I'm all for monitoring.
Sure.
But with us having one-third surface water, I... And reading what I did about the EPA and stuff like that, I don't think spraying is appropriate. That's my personal opinion. Doing with trucks and controlled, just like we do at Dufresne Park for Charter Day, I agree with that. If we're having an issue, we take care of it. But losing control, I'm not in favor of.
Can we go back to what you first started talking about?
Sure.
So it... For... In order for this to happen, it needs to be a warrant brought to the town, and the town needs to pass it for us even to join.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
So where I'm with this, is this is much bigger than us, sitting at this table. And I think it affects the entire town. So I would think that this is something that should be brought to the town body and let them decide whether or not they feel that it's correct for their town.
I don't have a problem bringing it before the town. But just as they're giving out their position, I'm just giving out mine.
No, I understand that, Dave. What I'm saying, though, is we can't make a decision here. The only thing that we can say is whether or not we want to have a tool, put on a warrant throughout the town meeting so the town can decide whether or not they want it. And I think at that point, you know, the pros and cons can be brought out at the town meeting, you know, the benefits to having it, maybe not the benefits to having it.
Well, since we're on GCAM now, I want to bring out the pros and cons to it as now so when the people listen to it, they get both sides of the story.
There are also multiple chemicals that are available.
Available, yes.
It's not just a one only.
Right.
I think there's at least four.
There's four, according to the EPA. But in Massachusetts, they only use address one under their website. And that's that A-D-V-I-N-1, 10 plus 10?
10 plus 10.
Is that the 20...
Yeah.
2006?
That's the 2006.
Okay. I'd be happy to contact Mr. Oliver tomorrow and get an up-to-date of what they're doing. It may be the same chemical, I really don't have no idea.
Well, they haven't changed it on their website. If you look at their website. So I'm presuming, because they haven't changed it, that's their official website, they haven't changed it. But the EPA, just as you statedly, is four different chemicals that can be used on different levels. And we have a lot of people in town with shallow wells. And that concerns me of the control of the agent.
Spraying isn't done unless there are index cases.
Spraying is done, according to the website, when the district determines it's proper to do it.
That's right. When you have an infected horse or an infected person, it's proper to do it.
Again, the district determines how to do it, not the town itself.
Well, you may be correct. I'd like to look at that further. Spraying from trucks is a common occurrence. Aerial spraying is a very uncommon occurrence.
And like I stated, controlled spraying from trucks, I don't have a problem with. But spraying just arbitrarily from the air, I would have a problem with, with our surface water and where it can go.
Again, I think this is just put to this board, whether or not we feel it should be brought to the town meeting on a warrant and let the town decide whether or not they feel the need to. And again, then at that, at the town meeting, I would assume that all the facts that would come out on both sides.
Absolutely.
And present it to the town people to decide whether or not they believe it's benefit in their town.
I have no problem putting it on a warrant. All right, and see if the people want to fund it.
That's all we wanted to do, is have a warrant and put it before the town and have a discussion.
You haven't said nothing?
No, not yet.
Oh, you're waiting your turn?
I'm waiting my turn, yeah.
Oh, okay, it's your turn.
My turn? I will agree with Glenn. It's something that, I mean, A, we don't have the power anyway. I'm not in favor of it, of aerial spraying. But again, it's the town's decision. And so I will make the motion that we get this onto the warrant for... Can we get this on for the special town? For the special town meeting on October 28th so the town can decide if we would like to join the mosquito district, whatever it's called.
Pioneer Valley.
Pioneer Valley.
Mosquito District.
Mosquito District.
I think I have a document here on that.
Our second chance motion.
Any more discussion on the warrant for the next town meeting for Pioneer Valley mosquito spray? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. We'll put it on the warrant, let the people decide, and we can be prepared for both sides.
Thank you all very much.
I just don't want to give up control.
I agree.
I think what the town...
But then again, we don't have that...
That's the people's choice.
We have the people.
But the people should know both sides.
Oh, and yes. And I think they will educate themselves on both sides.
Okay. We got to 6:50, Mr. Martin. It's 6:53 now, so we might as well do our one-day liquor license.
Hello.
I'm Peter Bernold. This is my cousin, Mary Cochran. I'm the supportive cousin slash attorney. So she called me in. We have a long affiliation with the town of Granby. Mary's father was a proprietor of sporting goods for many years, supplied sporting goods to the town of Granby. Mr. Sullivan, if I have the name correct, Ed Sullivan way back when. And then I was married to a Granby girl, Wendy Wordsworth. Grew up on South Street. Fortunately, we lost Wendy in the 90s to cancers, but her aunt still lives in town here, Laurlee Robert. Mary's son is getting married at the Camping Club. They insisted on a one-day liquor license, which from my point of view is fine. Mary's point of view is great. I happen to now do HR work for Williams Distributing, so I get to supply the beer. But she obtained a... Upon the request of Ms. Kelly, retained...
The one-day binder?
...brinder for the insurance. The event is a pleasant event, it's on October 5th coming up. We're hopeful that it'll be a family affair, 75 or 80 people, should be fairly subdued. Not expecting any wild, crazy, out of... Any cousins that I don't know? No. Behavior, but...
Are you just buying beer and wine, or are you buying all the alcohol?
Beer and wine.
Just beer. And seltzer and...
No.
Today it's not beer anymore, it's all these other crazy things.
Cider, whatever.
Cider, there you go.
Everything.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of how much you're going to be purchasing?
I have set aside about nine cases, given talking to, I'm going to buy it from the local proprietor here at Granby Liquors. I think basically, my experience is probably four to five, you know, over a six-hour period, people will drink somewhere four to maybe five maximum, you know, beverages, a couple in a capi hour.
So you're not buying them from Williams Distributing?
Well, Williams Distributing is going to supply it to Granby Package Store. But they have to buy it from Williams Distributing, which is the wholesaler. So it comes from Williams to the package store to the... So that's the...
Kat, is there something?
Yeah, you can't.
We support our local retailers, so...
You can't.
We can't sell, we can't sell directly to an individual. We have to sell through a retail outlet.
And the only... They, Granby Liquors is not on that list, which, um, they...
ABC.
They would have to go to, uh, what's his company do? The... They'd have to get it from Williams.
Well, they are buying it from Williams. It has to go through...
They can't go through the...
Williams can't sell it directly to a person.
They have to go to...
Town and Country?
That is...
West Springfield?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the big one there.
So certain ones are allowed to be phasing?
That's fine. Town and Country is one of my customers. I was just trying to be nice to them, Granby proprietor. I have no problem with Table &amp; Vine, you know? The salesmen...
Was it Table &amp; Vine now? Was Town and Country three years ago?
Sure, I have a, I'll have a receipt.
Thank you, Kathy.
So we're not buying it from Williams Distributing, we're going to be buying it from Table &amp; Vine?
Yes.
Well, if that's the correct, you'll get them the correct company, right?
They can buy it from Williams, that's on the list.
Okay.
But they can't buy...
I can only, they can sell it to me, yeah.
You have a list, provide them the list?
Okay, so it's going to be...
Is Table &amp; Vine, you suggested is one of the ones that...
Yes.
Yeah, they move by it from Table &amp; Vine.
Table &amp; Vine.
It's fine.
Set to Brian, we'll approve, manager.
Yeah, I'll get a receipt from them, it's no problem.
And the chief of police looked at it and had no problems.
So you have a special one-day license for wine and malt, dated October 5th, 2019. The responsible manager is Mary Ellen Cochran, to be held at the Camping Club Pioneer Valley Chapter 8 at 104 West State Street. Estimated number of guests is 90, with nine cases of beer, wine, and any variation of said beer and wine. Any variation of said beer and wine. And to be bought from Williams Distributing via Table &amp; Vine. And indicated nine cases. And the event is from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is that correct?
That's correct. All right, well, I will make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license and that your son has a fabulous wedding. Thank you very much.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on liquor license? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, in the meantime, gentlemen, I'm going to make a motion that we take a three-minute recess because I have had one too many of these.
I'll make it five minutes.
Five minutes? Can you second that motion?
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You second the motion then?
Our second chance motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back in session. And Mr. Shaloo, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Joe Shaloo, 140 School Street.
Hello, Mr. Shaloo.
Hello. I'm sure as you remember, I was here at the last meeting two weeks ago. Mr. Martin had said that he'd speak to the attorney and determine whether I... The petitioners could receive a letter clarifying the town's position on what's covered by the season's assist. I haven't heard anything from anyone. I didn't contact anyone directly because I'm still assuming I'm under the no-contact list. So I thought I'd come here tonight and see what their update is because it's two months now since the petition was submitted by 20 residents, and we've heard nothing.
Mr. Martin, do you have anything from the attorney?
No, as I told you earlier, I've been playing phone tag with the attorneys.
Okay, unfortunately, we don't have any more news for you, until the attorneys get in touch with Mr. Martin, he just stated they haven't returned his calls.
No, we've been playing phone tag back and forth.
Okay, well, they've been playing phone tag back and forth, so who's it, you or them?
I'm it right now.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Mr. Shaloo, what's this been going on for? Well, we submitted the petition in, I think it was the 15th of July, requesting the town to look, you know, the select board, it was a petition to the select board, to look into this interpretation that appeared to be in conflict with the videos of the sighting of the violation and the cease and desist relating to the expansion. Nothing was done for the first, you know, six weeks, as far as even scheduling an executive session with the town attorney, or special counsel, whoever you had the meeting with. So I waited till that had occurred, and I had seen that that executive session was included on one of the agendas, and then I came to the next meeting to ask, you know, if there was any update from the result of that meeting, of what the attorneys may have brought forward, because a lot of people have been saying that this was direction from the attorneys, that this was the view of the cease and desist is what it was, because of attorney opinions. So, now I'm wondering, you know, is that, because that would be in conflict with what the attorney put in writing from the ZBA appeal, of what his view of what was covered by that cease and desist. So this is just continuing, and I know there's a policy, a select board policy, that says prompt response to these types of issues is a requirement, a written prompt response. And I don't view two months as a prompt response, and this isn't just me, and that's why I came forward as a petition from all the, you know, not all the affected residents, because I didn't go out and contact anyone. I just told people that they wanted to sign that petition, they could contact me. I did not go knocking door to door, I may have to do that, you know, for some other purposes, but that's not what I did in this case, that, those were people that contacted me to bring forward that concern that doesn't appear that the cease and desist is being enforced, which applies to the full rifle range, the thousand-plus yard range. And then Mr. Martin said last meeting that safety can't be an issue, and safety would be an issue if they came for their permits, that that violation says that they should have come for it, they never came for. So if they ever came for their special permits for that target that's out next to Mr. Pulchlapex's property, then we could talk about the safety of that target as part of that permit. But to allow them to continue to use it, because safety's not part of the original cease and desist, to that, you know, and that is the furthest target, that is the furthest point of expansion. And for the, you know, so once again, you know, I've said this several times, I don't know how many times I need, I'm like coming back every two weeks from now on, as long as there's citizen participation, you know, and I think it's important, and I will bring it up at the next special town meeting, because I think it's important the town knows that this is not being responded to.
You cannot put something on a town meeting agenda without it being a warrant article.
No, but I can get enough signatures to make it a warrant article.
You can't?
Yes, I can, and I can bring it up as a non-binding referendum.
No, you can't, not if it's not on the warrant, if it's not on, if the...
Well, that's not my understanding.
No, no, because the issue is, is how are you warning the inhabitants that that topic is going to be talked about if it isn't on the warrant? I'm asking the question.
I'm just, I'm just saying it would be non-binding, that's why it's a non-binding article, a non-binding referendum.
That would not be, that would, I don't think it would fly in the, in the face of the Attorney General's office, due to the fact that the inhabitants haven't been warned, so that they could attend to have their say on this whole topic.
Well, and then I can get my 100 signatures and have it on the next, but, I'll say, I don't...
And you can do so, that's your right, that's your right as a registered voter, yes.
Yes. And once again, I really didn't want, it's been two years now, this issue's been going on, you know, and this whole shooting season, they've been up there, and I'm, you know, I can show you that they've been using the expanded area. I showed you last, and earlier in the spring this last year, that they were shooting to 980 yards, their own Facebook posts said that.
So, what you're looking for is an answer from Mr. Martin, what he's going to contact the special town council, what he's been trying to do, and for lack of words, they've been playing phone tags, funny to have that, the conversation that they need to have, so.
Yeah, I guess...
As a board, I think we should make it a priority, that this is taken care of sooner or later, as far as just waiting on, no, I know, I know you're trying to get a hold of him.
If you want to, go camp on his doorstep down in Springfield, if that's what you so desire, that's where his office is.
I don't, I don't want that, no.
I would think an email, asking that question could be...
No, I mean, Mr. Martin is going to, he's going to reach out to him in what he feels is the proper way to do so.
You know, your opinion of an email is fine, but I feel that a conversation is more appropriate than an email, because you can't put everything into an email that you want to talk about. I'm sorry, you have your opinion, I have my opinion, and that's where it is.
But once again, this is also a petition from, not just myself, this is a petition from all the residents that are affected by this on a fairly daily basis.
So, just, can I recap it? MAJ, so, Mr. Martin is trying to reach out, and has reached out to the special town council in reference to this, they've been able, unable to communicate back and forth, we'll ask that, that he continues to try to reach out to him, and, you know, and I know you want to know as soon as possible, and it's a priority that I think as a board too, and Mr. Martin's trying to make it happen as well.
Yeah, we want something definitive of what the town views as being covered by that cease and desist, I mean, we have that video, but that's not even an official record of that meeting.
So where we stand now is, is Mr. Martin can...
But you also have to understand, this board has to understand, that meeting that was held in April was not our special counsel, that was town counsel advising the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
We are going based upon special counsel...
Yes.
...who is representing us in the case in Boston.
Yes.
So there may be two different opinions, and if he's relying on just what was the videotape from the April hearing by the ZBA, that wasn't special counsel doing that, that was regular counsel.
I'm relying on the video from the ZBA appeal hearing back in December of 2017, where they upheld, where they defended the select board's decision to cite the violation and the cease and desist, and upheld the select board's decision, and it went to land court because of that. And his written summary of that summarizes his view of what the cease and desist should be covering.
And, again...
And this appeared to be in conflict with that.
And, again, as I stated, even counsel cannot tell the sitting zoning enforcement official what he is to enforce or not enforce. He does not have that authority, he can advise, but he cannot direct him as to what he is going to be considered the area under the cease and desist. That is the sole purview of the zoning enforcement officer under Master General Law 48. It's that simple.
I know we've been down that road before.
But people don't want to hear that, so the issue becomes, Glenn, I'm sorry, and I'm going to say this, people don't want to hear an answer that they don't want to hear. And I'm sorry, you keep bringing it back, you keep bringing it back, the answer has been at times, keep writing complaints, correct?
Yes.
Hasn't that been a...
Yes.
...a statement?
Yes.
How many complaints have been issued? Written complaints have been issued to the board's, to the zoning enforcement officer regarding the use of the Granby Bow and Gun Club. There was for a while, but then it stopped. Okay? And the zoning enforcement official, officer, is not going to go out and be allowed on the shooting range unless he has a reason to be able to go out there. He just can't show up and say, "I want to go out and look." He cannot do that, it has to be done based upon a written complaint that he has to investigate and then respond to.
And I want to say one thing to that, with the last two written complaints that I submitted last October, 2018, sat here and never even went to the lawyer, never meant, never mind went, it never went to the building inspector, those two complaints, they never made it to the lawyer until I had Ben Coyle contacting me directly, and I asked him what the status of those were, because I was told I could only speak to the town's special counsel at that point. And he says, "I haven't received any complaints," or "I wasn't notified that I needed to respond to these complaints." And eventually he responded back, "As the attorney for the town, I choose not to respond to these complaints."
I'm sorry, Mr. Shaloo, I wasn't here back then.
I, I understand.
What were those two complaints referencing?
Those were complaints referencing Mr., this same topic, because Mr. Briggs had gone out to a September shoot, a long-range precision rifle match.
Okay.
His letter to me stated that they had moved, you know, when his observations were they moved, they were not using either the lower shooting position, or the upper shooting position, which are the, you know, subject of the cease and desist order.
Okay.
Which means that tells me he's only looking at those two shooting positions as being covered. He said they moved to an upper-middle area, and when I showed him the Google Earth map, it was the one that's 980 yards forward of the upper shooting pad, still shooting out 980 yards to the furthest target, up against Mr. Pulchlapex's property. And so, so anyways, when I got that letter, I came into the select board, well, actually I went to Mr. Briggs first, and then Mr. Martin told me he was doing what the select board told him to do, as far as his view and what he was enforcing on that cease and desist. Not that he was doing what he chose or viewed to be appropriate, he was doing what the select board expected him to do. So I came and asked the select board if they had directed him to view it as shooting position only. And Mr. Sucktent said no, Mr. Shinaki said no, I don't believe Mr. Joyce said anything during that conversation before the board, but they said that they did not direct him to do that.
So, I guess my question is, so your, the complaints that you had brought back in October were basically referencing the original...
Yes, how this whole interpretation of the shooting position only being covered by the substantial expansion of cease and desist.
Okay.
And his interpretation of that when he did his site visit during a shooting match.
And, again, if someone does not agree with the decision made by the zoning enforcement officer, they appeal it to the zoning board of appeals, as is their right.
Which I did.
And what did they say?
And they said, had Mr. Briggs there, as a matter of fact, for both mine and Mr. Pulchlapex's complaint, and appeal of his decisions, and they said that, well, Mr. Briggs said that he was, this was not his decision, he was doing what he was told. Now, you sent this last, at the last meeting, told me that he's recanted that statement, and that was not his position, but that was his testimony to the ZBA.
But, because I asked him in front of Kathy Leonard, "Who did anybody instruct you on how to enforce?" And he said, "No, he never said that at that meeting."
Well, he said, "You chose not to watch the video, but you..."
No, I'm not going to watch it, because you know something, I'm not going to call you a liar, all I'm saying is, is, when you came in, all I'm saying, when you came in, I went and asked him, because I wanted to know who told him.
Well, how about not calling me a liar, how about saying if he... I mean, the video's a video, I could bring it in and show you.
This is the same house agent we had last time.
Yes.
It really is, and I...
And there is no update.
And in respect to, to what you said in the beginning, you're looking for an answer as to what can be told you from...
Your own select board policies, a prompt response.
From, from the, at the same, I'll say, the special town council.
Yes.
So, Mr. Martin's going to continue to follow up with him?
In a response to our petition, I'm expecting something in writing, or something I can let people know that we're going to be on the agenda to come back in again, and have an answer from the select board of how this interpretation's going to be viewed. How is the cease and desist going to be viewed and defended in land court? That's all we're asking.
Okay, so, going back...
What's covered by it?
Was just said, Mr. Martin will follow up with the special town council and get an answer, and we require a question, or whether or not an answer can be given, because that could be a possibility as well, and we'll move forward from there.
Okay.
We had special counsel in here in executive session. We are doing what special counsel told us to do to protect the town, the entire town of Granby. There are things that individuals, any three of us, might want to say, but we're not allowed to say, and the, the things that you brought in, they're just an argument, okay? The decision is the judge, there's not even a date in court yet.
Well, no, I, I think we, as the people who are around the gun club, should be entitled to know what the town views as being covered by the cease and desist. I'm not asking for legal strategy, I'm not, what is covered by the cease and desist?
I think it's clear in the documents that you handed us what the town's special counsel position is. I think it's clear, and he can't enforce anything until he goes before the judge, that's it. That's his argument. The Bow and Gun Club will have a different argument, probably 180 degrees.
Oh, yeah, they said they've always used that full expanded area, that's their...
So the judge makes the decision, not the special counsel.
No, I understand that, but we, you know, for a long time, we were, the residents, the local people were calling up and saying they're using the expanded area. And when I first heard the terms, shooting position, lower shooting shed and upper shooting pad, was the police chief, when he was here way back in the spring, before Jen Silver was here, basically saying that his officers are going up there, and they were observing where the shooting was occurring. If they were not in the lower shooting shed or the upper shooting pad, the officers did not see it as a violation. And then, of course, the gun clubs then started using that as, they're getting unfounded complaints of violations of the cease and desist, and we're sending the police up there and wasting all the police resources, and, you know, so the residents stopped calling, because what, what is covered by the cease and desist? If the police officers weren't informed of what and how to view that by the building inspector? You know, we need to know what is viewed as being in violation, and if we don't know that, we can't notify this building inspector that we believe a violation's occurring. I mean, I can go out there and take videos of them shooting at that 1,000-yard target right next to Mr. Pulchlapex's property, it is that close, it is less than me to those individuals sitting back at that table from his property line. And they're shooting at that from over a half-mile away, with the winds that they have up there in those hills. It's completely unsafe, it should never have been allowed to continue, because it's clearly part of the expansion. And I think the building inspector could put an end to that by just saying move those targets.
Then appropriate, like Mr. Martin said, appropriate complaint should be filed with the proof, so we can forward the proof to the special town council.
Take video.
Yeah.
And then get an affidavit that that's what actually occurred.
That's proof.
Such a date. Such and such a time.
A picture, or an affidavit like Mr., a video. And without proof, we can't give special town counsel the evidence to go forward.
Well, I said you had your proof, you had your building inspector up there watching them shoot out there, but that's, that's not, because he wasn't watching for the right stuff, so, he was told to watch for something else.
As Mr. Martin explained, our opinion and the zoning enforcement officer can be different, okay? That's why special town council is going to court.
I understand that, but the fact that Mr. Martin doesn't even go back and watch the video to see if what Mr. Briggs says, that he never said that, is true or not true, as his supervisor, I think is just, and then he says that I might be lying...
And that's your opinion, which you are entitled to.
I am, but the video is there, the video is the evidence.
He didn't say you're lying.
No, he did, he said, "I don't want to call you a liar," is what he said. "I don't, I don't want to go back and watch the video, I didn't want to call you a liar," is that, that's what he said, that's on tape.
I think he said he wasn't calling you a liar, so, but either so, that's, he's the follow-up on the original question that you asked.
Yes, we, we want some clarification of what's covered by the cease and desist.
And if the people...
And if it's only the upper shooting pad, and that's what the building inspector says it is, then good luck defending that before the judge in land court, as being under the powers test for substantial expansion.
But if there are, if there are complaints, and there is proof, like videos, photographs, like you mentioned, we'd love to have them, to forward them to special town council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shaloo.
I wish I could say the same.
Glenn, new department reports, no new ones since this morning, okay.
You got the finance committee one?
I didn't see the finance, is that a new one?
Not finance committee, I just saw them in my email, give me a second, my brain will start functioning.
You want the planning boards ones?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I read the planning board ones, and those are the ones you're referring to.
Yes. I was just watching.
That's okay.
Finance committee.
Well, when you said finance, I know I didn't read anything on finance.
No, I was just, I had spent the weekend watching finance committee on YouTube, so that was in my brain. Okay, so that's gone. Mr. Scrap pile, okay?
Yeah, it's good enough, I'll go sort through it.
I'll make a motion that we accept departmental reports.
I will second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the department reports? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous, department reports.
First warrant you have is warrant number 15.
That is a payroll warrant. The gross amount of the warrant is $420,617.54. And that's dated September 6th, 2019. Warrant number 16 is a maintenance warrant for the same thing, which is, on this warrant, we ended up paying for the pumper truck in order to get, no, I'm sorry, we paid a payment on the school roof. That was about $770,000.
$7760,000.
Yeah, $700,000. Then we ended up paying as a progress payment, and I believe that roof is almost done. I think they're finishing up, so I think the work went very well on that. So the total of this warrant is $967,698.62. Then we have warrant number 16S. There is a problem in trying to get the school bills included in with the town warrant, so we had to create its own warrant in our thing. When I talked to the software company, they had no clue as to why it happened, and that is in the amount of $189,888.34.
Say that again, I got, that's 16S.
16S.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I saw a lot of things on 16S that I didn't know what else we were doing in the town as far as-
That was a school warrant, and basically normally we include it with our other warrant, with the town bills.
Mm-hmm.
But for some reason or other, the software wasn't allowing me to do it, and I kept talking to the software vendor, and he couldn't figure it out. So it was just as easy to create a new warrant number for it.
Yeah, I wondered why the one was so short.
Yes.
When I looked at it, I was like, oh, okay.
So, so that's what, how we ended up fixing that one. And then we have warrant number 17, dated 9/13, the amount of $42,078. Because I was able to, because I paid the school bills on the prior week's warrant, there were no school bills with this one, these are just town bills.
I will make a motion to approve fiscal year 2020 warrants number 15, 16, 16S, and 17.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the four warrants? Hearing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous to sign the warrants to pay the bills.
I am, I'm just signing, go ahead.
The next item is an agreement for services with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in regards to the town's MVP action grant response. We do have a new RFR coming out, and this will have, pay for them to look at the RFR, revise our action grant project for the Granby Water Main Phase 1 construction, and Phase 2 and Phase 3 design, and the cost of this is $740. And authorize the chair to sign said document.
I'll sign the document if the members want it.
I think would be more appropriate if we let Mr. Martin sign these, because these are going to be amended. And in lieu of this project being so time-sensitive, I would like to make a motion that we approve this, but we give the signature to Mr. Martin, because we know they're going to be amended.
So you're saying-
That we can approve these, and-
And authorize Chris to sign them.
But authorize him, Mr. Martin.
So that we don't have to do this every time because of the time sensitivity.
Exactly, because of the time sensitivity of the grant applications and everything that comes about, we don't meet for every two weeks, and sometime with a long month, we got three weeks.
We don't have to meet for you to sign them, just, we authorize you to sign them.
That's why we're authorizing him to sign them.
But if we authorize you as the chair to sign, you can go down and sign anytime you want. It doesn't have to be doing-
I don't have a problem doing that either, I just don't want to hold that up, Mr. Martin is here every day, I'm not.
You could be.
I could be, but, either way you want to do it, it's fine with me. It's just that I don't think we have to bring this back to the table every time it changes for all of us.
Well, no.
For the year, that's what I'm saying. We'll authorize him to change this. You already read this?
Yeah, and I have my copy right here.
But if there are substantial changes, I'd like the board to be aware of it.
Yes, yes, they are, but we're just authorizing him to sign them. Because there could be changes in the wording here, because when they come back from the architect and they come back, but they might have to be resigned and like that, that's all I'm saying. If it comes to money or something like that, yes, we'll look at it.
Well, if we're kind of, right, if we're going to kind of pick and choose what we're going to, it's either-
I don't think this is a situation where we can have our cake and eat it too.
I mean, I have a lot of, a lot of trust in Mr. Martin, so I'm not really concerned-
I do too, and I know how towns, how time-sensitive this project is, we're always running around.
So, I'm, I'm-
Right, Kathy?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with Chris signing them, but I'd also like, if any major changes are made, that be brought to the board, though.
Yeah, but no, no problem with that at all.
Can I just ask what we're defining as major?
Well, Jen, I knew that question was coming.
Of course it was.
And unfortunately, I mean, unless we give a whole list of things, it'd be difficult for us to do so. So again, I would put that in the hands of Mr. Martin. Yeah, he's very familiar with it, and I think appropriately he could tell us, gee, using his knowledge, I think this is a major concern or change, and it's not a normal change, if you will, and things that need to be looked at.
Look at all the things that he's brought forward already about this project.
Yes, I, and I do understand that, I guess I'm just looking at it from a major minor standpoint.
With, with, I think too, Jen, not to interrupt you, but I think, though, when a, when a change is made and he does sign off, the board's made aware of it.
Well, yeah.
Will be made aware of it when he's signing off on something different.
Okay, I guess I'm going to ask Chris, what are you comfortable being in charge of, authorizing for changes? On your own?
I think the board knows that if there's something-
Major.
-concerned about, I will bring it to the board. If it's a minor change here, change there, you know, a date here, a date there, I think that's minor.
I'm not concerned about dates, I'm more concerned about dollars.
Yeah. And believe me, I would be too.
He's very responsible, he makes the buffalo squeal in a nickel.
Since I am not in planning or construction or any of that type of stuff, what is a usual overage that can happen? Percentage-wise, I know like in building, they say 20%.
Well, now, all this is going to do.
For the Water Main project up through, about what, number 55?
55.
55, okay. We, we are applying for an MVP grant to help pay for up to 75% of the cost, okay?
Up to 75%.
Right, because it's a competitive grant.
Correct.
So we have to be careful not to say we're going to get 75%, we can get up to 75%. The, the thing with that is, what Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is going to do is look at our original scope of work that we were going to submit last year, for this year's round of funding. We weren't able to guarantee that what the work was going to be done within a year of the application. So what they're going to do is go through, look at that original application, make any changes to the scope of work that we'll be doing under the, under this, and then put together the paperwork to submit to the RFR for MVP action grant monies for this fiscal year. And that's all they're doing.
Okay.
And if we had a grant writer on board in-house, the grant writer would be doing it, but we don't have a grant writer on board yet, just like we don't have the planning, or we don't have the conservation person on board yet, so we have to sub out some of the stuff, and we use Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for those things. Do you have any idea, Mr. Martin, when you think we're going to start filling those other positions?
No.
Okay, that's an honest answer, I just didn't know.
No.
There was any plans?
Well, I've been working on a host community agreement for a proposed marijuana facility in town. I thought that was a little more important. Because, because that was a revenue generator versus expending money, sorry, but-
Oh, yeah, and then we do have money appropriated by the townspeople for those positions.
And I understand that, Jay, but when I get five topics in front of me-
You got to prioritize them.
I felt that the host community agreement was more important, because that's the potential of revenue for the town.
I understand that, just like I do when I showed the land last week, because that's revenue-producing.
Do you want to make the motion, or do you want me to?
You can.
I will make a motion that the board accepts the agreement for services by and between Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the Town of Granby for Green Communities Technical Assistance Consulting Work, and that we authorize Chris Martin-
No, not Green Communities MVP.
Oh, MVP, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
You're on the next one.
I thought ahead of myself, but I knew what I was doing.
Okay, that's okay.
And that we authorize Chris Martin to sign any changes.
And then he can, if you want, he can-
And keep the board informed.
Keep the board informed.
Keep the board informed of any set changes.
Major.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the MVP grant response consulting work that we're requesting? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Two contracts.
Yep. Okay, is your warrants-
You're going to really mess them up.
In the two contracts.
Glenn was hoarding everything.
No, it's just, taking his time.
You know, I had the wrong, I had both of them in my hands.
That's okay.
Yep.
We also have a proposed agreement for services with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Green Community Technical Assistance Consulting Work. The amount of this is in the amount of $6,885. And basically, they would be doing meta-grant administration, the energy study coordination, that was the energy study that we were doing up at the police station to regarding the, putting the solar and a battery in the back of the police station to store the power in the daytime to be used at nighttime, to do the annual reporting for the Green Communities grant that is required, and to assist in the grant writing process for the next round of Green Community monies. And the total, that's for 81 hours, and for a total of $6,885.
And if people want to know, that's the exact number of hours we use light, that's what I put in for the same thing for this year.
That's the exact number?
Exact number of hours, just want to put a bit in price, but what does it every And if the board wants to know, the school did contact me about the data for the LED lights, we did have a meeting, they said they would give us the draft of the data by this Thursday, and the final on the data for the LED lights by 1 October, then the other two items are to be determined for getting the data, as far as the dates.
That's good.
So, keeping you up to breath, what's going on?
Motion to approve the contract?
I'm making, I'm making, jeez, are we in a hurry?
Yes.
I will make the motion to approve the agreement for services between Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the Town of Granby for Green Communities Technical Assistance Consulting Work as written.
And authorize Chris Martin to sign any changes that may happen while keeping the board informed.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the Green Community support from Jill? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if the board wants to know, I was involved with writing both those things, with Jill for the Green Communities, and Emily for the MVP, so I know exactly what they say. And there'll probably be another one coming for MVP.
Second, ready for the next one?
Yep.
Okay, next one is our annual report to the EPA in order to have our MS4 permit regarding the stormwater and sewer and everything else that goes along with dealing with wastewater. This is an annual report that has to be filled out, it has to be signed by the chairman of the board, sorry, Jay.
That's fine.
And basically, I think it was all sent to you, all the information's there, and I just have two copies for you to approve and authorize the chair to sign.
Jen, have you seen it?
I have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, those are the ones with the links that were on it, the date sent us, email this.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve the annual report.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion about the annual stormwater report, the permitting? Hearing none, all say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three ayes, everybody's unanimous.
There are no two-frame rentals at this point. Correspondence, I think the only really items of note were that-
All the dams.
Was the dams and the fact that we got MVP, I don't know, designation, whatever you want to call it.
We got a fancy certificate for Boston.
That's nice, yeah.
For the work that we completed, it shows that we completed, just like they could create anything else, so.
Signed by Katie Theo Harries.
Yeah, I just call her climate Katie, because I can't pronounce her last name.
Yeah, I just call it climate Katie because I can't pronounce her last name.
A good English name. You should learn how to speak, how to pronounce it.
Well, she laughs when I call it climate Katie. In fact, Lieutenant Governor calls her that now.
The only other item was we had a letter from the Friends of Forge Pond wanting us to do a study. At this point in time, I'm, I don't feel we should spend that money. We currently have a contract with Dave Leonard to put together a plan of action regarding the dam. And before we do any studies, whether we're going to keep it or not keep it, I think we need to allow him to do his job and report back to us.
I agree with that. The only question that I have is, will the studies that he's doing for us on the Forge Pond Dam and then you got the Forge Pond Dyke suffice for the inspections?
Yes, he is doing it to meet the DCR, to report that need to be filed with DCR.
I just didn't want to pay for it twice.
And just so you know, the tree work is almost done. I believe they're coming in to finish it either tomorrow or the day after because they had a delay on getting the crane on site to reach over the house and grab those trees that are hard to reach by the house.
That's a big crane.
Okay. So, so we move forward on that. Dave Leonard has been kept abreast of that, so hopefully our efforts will pay off and then I'll wait and see what Dave says we need to work on next, and then we'll address that at a future town meeting to get funding for that.
Where is Dave right now with the study?
He was waiting for the tree work to get done, to make sure that it was done in accordance to what he needed to have done. He had emailed today and said there were still some trees that needed to be removed, but he didn't know that the crane was coming back in, so he's been kept abreast in.
So for the next select board meeting, can we get an update from him?
Yes. I'll ask him for an update on where he is on that status.
Yeah, we do have people that are reaching out to us, so I think we'll provide an update where we are with that. Helpful.
Basically, we were waiting for the trees to be taken down, and that took a while, to be honest with you.
Because the permitting, for one thing, took a while to get.
That and the, and the rains.
Yep, and the rains because the vehicles couldn't get in there.
Yep.
And he's got a crane there.
Especially the size of the one they got put in there this time.
But it's easy to get in, it won't be easy to get out.
But we're going to have an update and that way that people know where we are with things and.
Sure. Actually, may I see if he can write up a report that?
That'd be good.
We can send to the board.
Okay, that'd be very nice.
Thank you.
Outside of that, curbside collection, Waste Management did contact me and want to know if I had submitted the proposed, their proposal to the board. I said I had, however, the board was still mulling it over, for lack of a better word. Does the board want to go with the five-year proposal from them, or do you want me to actually start putting together an RFP for curbside collection?
Well, since their proposal is just accounting for the actual trucks to come to and from, it does not address our needs for hazardous waste. It doesn't address the conexes like we used to get for bulky waste and yard waste.
Sure it does. That's still in the contract.
I didn't see it on that last one, on the proposal for the.
You got to read the original contract. All he's saying is the price per year to continue that contract in effect.
For the vehicles that they pick up thing. And it doesn't have the price of the disposal of the trash, which nobody's going to give us the price per ton.
Because they don't dispose of it.
Right.
We bring that to, or the.
Oyo.
Casella, Casella Place now. And that's a separate contract that negotiated on a county-wide level, actually Pioneer Valley level.
Yep.
So, and the only other place you can bring it outside of there is to Covanta, the trash burner. Those are the only two places you have contracts with right now.
Yep. I understand. It's ship it or burn it.
So, so they won't address those costs?
No.
Okay. That has always been separate from their costs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The only thing is, is the, I agree with the hazardous waste, hazardous waste day.
Yep.
I think we should ask them if we get $3,500 or $4,000 a month or a year for hazardous waste. We used to get that through ALI.
Right.
It wasn't written into this contract, and that's the only other thing I would rather see included in here.
And the conexes for the yard waste and the bulky waste?
We were given two in the spring and I think two in the fall. I just have to go back and read that.
For yard waste, that's what I believe it is, and then we were given two conexes in the fall for bulky waste. And that's when we are talking about possibly increasing the bulky waste to the spring and the.
You've talked that.
I don't, I.
You haven't convinced me yet on that one.
That's okay.
Because many communities that you, that you, I've dealt with, they only have one bulky waste a year.
So, let me ask you something, Chris. So if we, that's added on to the contract that they're proposing as far as.
Well, it's a counter offer for us to accept their five-year contract.
But that doesn't have any, that doesn't affect us as far as renegotiating the contract because we'll get an RFP at all?
Nope. Nope. We have, you can, this all, actually, trash collection doesn't fall within the Mass General Law 30D.
That's my question, yeah.
It does not fall within it. We try and fall within it.
Right.
To try and keep them honest, but we do not have to do that. We can, if we feel this is a legitimate offer, we can extend the contract.
Basically, it comes down to this. Do we want to continue curbside service or not? If we want to continue curbside service, this is a good deal because it's only a 2% hike per year.
That was never my argument. I agree 100% on that.
I mean, that, that's.
My argument is how the town pays for it. We won't get into that one today.
I understand that because I agree with you, but the, from the committee was, I was on before, the only way that you can mandatory make somebody pay is through taxation. You cannot make everybody sign up for a fee.
So, my only concern with that is that it's, we are assuming it's a good deal. We have no facts that it is a good deal. And I guess we wouldn't know if it's a good deal unless we went out for an RFP, but then again, we could find out it was a good deal and we passed up our option at it.
Mm-hmm. And the cost of living has been going up more than 2% per year, and they're only going up 2% a year for the next five years.
I know, but I also look at too, maybe, you know, some people are willing to, you know, when you put things out for an RFP or a contract, you know, people start bidding. You know, a lot of companies need money.
No, I don't disagree with.
They're willing to, you know, sometimes have a lower bid than somebody else.
My concern with that is if they're going to low, if they're going to go to a lower bid, they're going to have to cut their costs somewhere else, and will we pay the price?
Well, again, that's.
It's a gamble.
Our contract states what is required from them. There are few.
Correct, states what's required, but will we find trash barrels thrown on the side of the road again? Which was a common occurrence with our last pickup.
I find mine on the side of the road, throw it outside the road.
That just might be the wind taking it by with me flying down.
You're flying down the road.
Just saying.
But I mean, I said, I think it's, you know, I think it's a tough decision because either way, we don't know.
The board is paying the big bucks to make this decision.
Yeah. Don't spend it all in one place.
I do think it's, I do think it's reasonable. And Waste Management's one of the larger companies out there for that, so, and then the kind of the, I think you brought up last time, Chris, too, is not just the, the contract price, but also like vehicles and stuff like that to ensure that, you know, collection is being done, being done on the proper time schedule.
And they're not breaking down on the side of the road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'd say the bottom line is.
Struggle with it, but I'm okay with it.
Which, which is natural. That, that's a natural reaction because you're talking big bucks.
Yeah, that's.
That's the thing.
And a lot of towns recently, like East Hampton, West Hampton, has dropped the curbside service and said, everybody, you're on your own, because the people didn't want to pay it in taxes.
That's not for us to decide.
Well, if you sign this five-year contract, it will be, because now you just signed for vehicles.
The issue is going to become is this, is at some point, we close down the enterprise fund and make it a town function.
Mm-hmm.
Period. Like most towns do. Most towns, it's just a, a department within the highway department, and they oversee these type of contracts. And that's it. Okay? It's just that the board of selectmen has overseen the contract, and we make the payments because it's an enterprise fund. We could close down that enterprise fund, close all that money over to the general fund, and just make it a department within the regular town budget.
And the only other alternative is you don't have curbside pickup and everybody's on.
No, you still have curbside pickup, only, only it's a justification for taxes. It's just within the regular operation of, of the town.
If the town, if the people want curbside pickup, yes.
I don't think any of them will say no.
Depends on who you talk to.
Well, it's not the curbside pickup that's the problem. It's the way that it's funded. And I get that other, I get that other municipalities fund it through their taxes.
But do you?
It's just that we didn't from the beginning, so that's where the problem is now coming in.
It's always been funded through taxes, but, but.
Not when you bought permits.
Jen, the other, the other argument against the way it's funded is this. It's the same for operation of the school. It's the same for operation of the police department, the fire department. It's paid based upon the value of your house.
I understand that.
Okay? So that's the problem, is that's the only mechanism we have of funding, is through the property values. So, yeah, you don't have a child in school. I'm just going to say this, okay? You don't have a child in school, but you're still paying in your taxes to, to fund the school.
Correct.
Higher than a rate that someone may have five kids in the school, if your house is higher in value. Okay? We can't start picking and choosing and saying, well, we want to fund this this way and fund this that way. Either it's an all or nothing. Either it's considered a municipal service that we're going to offer our residents, or, like you said, Jake, get out of the business.
Yep.
But be prepared, because you're probably going to have to have probably $100,000 put aside to get rid of all the trash and garbage you're going to find on the side of the roads.
Which we already find, unfortunately, and I don't think it's from Granby residents.
No, it's not. Not the majority of it.
Can I tell you right now, your Duframe Park and your Brown Ellison Park is going to become a trash heap.
Right.
Because already we have people filling the barrels up there with their own household trash.
Already filling the barrels. Before we had the people picking up the trash cans, they were always overfilled and people were complaining.
You don't got to sell me, I enjoy the, the curbside pickup.
I love it. I'm not complaining about that.
But that's a decision. You know, everybody can have their own opinion, but at some point, our, does the town want to offer that service? We had that big discussion back when we first implemented this. Now you're, you're going to have that discussion every time it comes time for a contract.
At least if you go this way. We've got five years of quiet.
I only got a year, yeah.
Oh, no, you got more.
No. I'm all done in a year, yeah.
No.
If somebody wants to make a motion, we'll put it to the vote.
But I still would like to say, we're approving it as long as we get.
Hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste day funding. And we can ask for a couple extra conex boxes and see what they say.
At this point, then, Chris, why don't you contact them, have them put that in writing, and then we'll bring it to the board for a vote.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll see it in writing.
And I'd like to see a couple more conexes for bulky waste. Even if you decide that we're not going to do a spring and a fall, I want to tell you what, I'm, I'm not going to fill up Dave's dump trucks again like last year after all the conexes are full.
Worst, worst case scenario is, he can ask for them. They can come back and say, no, we're only going to offer, offer one. He can ask.
If you don't ask, the answer's always no.
Let's see what, what they're willing to give us. If we're willing to make this stretch and go out on a five-year contract, maybe they're willing to give a little more.
Give us some more conexes and hazardous waste day each year, which we are signed up with, was it seven other communities, I believe, or this? Total of eight now.
We participate in a regional.
Right. I think it's eight communities now. So if the people don't know it, you have to do a sign up with the Board of Health and you can go to one of eight different communities and dump your hazardous waste all year long. You're not just restricted to the one day in Granby. You didn't know that?
Nope.
That's not quite true.
That is.
It's not quite true.
You just sign up with.
It's not quite true.
Okay.
There are eight events over the course of the year.
That's correct.
Some of those events are open to the Town of Granby, other ones aren't, because we're signed on with, say, the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District, but they're not taking trash from Granby, or hazardous waste from Granby at their event. You've got to look at each of the events, what towns are allowed to go there.
Well, the.
Now, you can't go to any, in all of them.
I didn't say that. I said, the, the email I got from the Board of Health listed all the communities, and it says, you're welcome to go to them all, but you must sign up with the Board of Health first.
I have on a sheet that's in the selectman's office, but that's okay.
Okay.
It can be clarified by the Board's, Board of Health.
Mm-hmm. So they're the ones that make the arrangements?
It's all part of the Western Mass DEP regulation, but we won't go there. All right, so I'll get back to Mr. Boyd at Waste.
Mm-hmm.
With the counter offer, keep the prices the same but give us more.
Yep. That's basically it.
Sounds good to me.
Because they're going to jack it up on the cost per ton per trash anyways. That's a separate contract.
I have any ideas?
That's a separate contract, yeah.
Well, we may have to pay for our recyclables, too.
I know it. They're going to become trash.
That's the big one is the Murph, is the Murph contract.
Yeah, they're going to become trash.
Because according to them, they're losing a million dollars a year on operating the recycling facility.
Because nobody will buy their recyclables because they're not really clean.
No, China, China's the one who turned around.
That's right, because they were not clean. They had to spend too much money cleaning before they could use them, so they don't want them no more.
I'm not getting political here.
We're not going to get into a political debate. So, and then the last thing is your bulky waste fees.
I went through them all, and like I said, in addition to the cost of the containers, which hope we get through the contract, which we've just discussed, a weekend cost us about, well, last year was $3,553 in wages. If you figure the wages and in the.
What cost is $3,000 in wages?
That's what we pay because we have the.
How many people are working today?
What about?
Usually have one, two.
Five or six.
Three, a minimum of four.
Minimum of fours.
How is that going to be $3,500 in wages?
Overtime.
Overtime.
Because it's not on a Saturday, it's usually the highway people who end up doing the work.
It's one day. It's four all together.
Yep.
Four days.
Right. But I'm just saying, but it's all at overtime wages and.
Right.
But, yeah.
I thought we were talking about one day.
No.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's, it's four days.
Okay, I'm working.
Four days of wages, but it's going to be, you have to factor it in to the total cost.
That seems more reasonable.
You're talking 900 bucks a day.
Yeah.
It's not bad.
When I went through and looked at it with the other ones that we have from the other communities, we are definitely on the low side. I would, in my mind, the easier way to do it is we increase everything by 50%. And if you look at it, like a refrigerator, for example, we charge $25. If you flip it over to one of the other pages, they charge $75. So if you pick each one item, they're different on each, so I try to do a happy medium. And we're only charging $10 or $15 max for something. I mean, a mattress on another one, depending on the size of the mattress, $75 each right here for a box bringing mattress.
What are we paying, paying the.
10 bucks.
10 bucks.
10 bucks for a mattress.
That's all we're charging our people, but some communities are charging 75.
No, I think what Glenn's asking is what are we paying?
Right.
To get rid of all the stuff we collect.
10 dollars.
10 dollars.
Okay, so that's what we're spending to get rid of it.
I don't see a need to.
As long as we're covering costs.
Right, as long as we're covering costs, I, I think that's fine to me, but I know we talk about the wages, but it's, there still should be a certain part that the town talk about the wages, but it still should be a certain part that the town covers as expenses.
The only other thing that I can't give you a true cost is the electronics, because that's based upon tonnage. Okay? The guy comes in, we draw it in his special box, okay? He takes it away, weighs it, so it's a half a ton, it's, you know, 500 bucks per ton, so it costs us 15 to get rid of it.
So, with that said, if electronics is the only thing that we can't put a set number on, then let's maybe look and increase in the electronics piece.
But I'm just saying, that's the only one that I can't keep you figuring out, because every time David picks up a mattress on the side of the road, and they bring it to Casella, well, there's that little extra charge for 10 bucks for a mattress.
Okay.
Okay, so, yes, we can track that one, definitely.
That would be my thought, my opinion on it, that we look at that as far as electronics and stuff like that, and, you know, obviously TVs weigh much less, they do now than they did 10 years ago, so. But I think, again, that's something we can't put a set number on, and so, in respect to that, we need to make sure that we're covering our cost on it.
Well, that's why I was saying that if we did that, I'm basing mine on if we do it twice a year. If we increase these because they're lower than the other communities surrounding us, if we had extra funds from the first one, we could give it back to the people in the second one. It doesn't say that we have to keep this price list the same forever.
I don't, I just, again, I just go by if we're, if we're, if we're being charged a certain amount, I think that's the amount we charge the residents. I don't see why we would go up and down, up and down. I think, going back to what Chris was saying, as far as electronics, that's something we can't put a-
As long as they're gonna stay-
A solid number on it.
As long as they're gonna stay the same, then I don't have a problem with it, but I don't see any guarantee the prices are gonna stay the same.
I might recommend upping just the electronics section.
Well, that's where I am, because Chris has talked about-
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
It's on a, it's on a tonnage weight type system. We can't kind of predict that, so. And if down the road, if, you know, they start charging 15, 20 dollars for mattresses, then we start charging 15, 20 dollars for mattresses. I mean, I don't want to see us making money off this.
I'm not trying to make money, I'm trying to break even, to include with the wages that we're paying as well.
We're gonna, town, sorry, Glenn.
Go ahead, Jen.
The town's gonna pay for it one way or the other, whether it's Dave picking it up on the side of the road, or us covering what?
I think the town should incur some type of expense as far as wages and stuff like that. That's part of people paying their taxes and stuff like that, too.
I agree.
There's gotta be a little give. Can't keep on, you know, take, take, take.
What's your list, your thoughts?
I gave my thoughts. If you guys want to do a motion, it's up to you.
Do you want me to put something together, current, like you did for the Seater weights, current, proposed, and let the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay right now with keeping them the same except for-
Electronics.
Electronics, and if, I don't, if you want a percent, like a number to go along with the electronics, then it's fine.
What I can try and do, let me go back and look at the actual bill, see what the actual numbers were, and then, I mean, estimate.
Yeah, that's all. And we'll know for the future.
Just to remind you that bulky waste day is September 28th. So, we don't have time, time?
Yeah, you got time, you gotta get, you gotta get these covered.
So, we stay with this this time, we go with, when we do our spring one, we can-
We'll learn from-
Well, you know what? We'll know from this time what it was and stuff like that, so next time, we don't even have to increase the thing, but also, too, the next time, we'll know if anybody's gone up and charging us for other things. At least, you know, now that everything except electronics is pretty much, the cost is what it is.
The cost is what it is. Okay. Well, then, I will make a motion that we accept the bulky waste fees as is for this September 28 collection.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Okay, if there's any more discussion on the bulky waste days for September the 28th of 2019, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and we'll see how much it costs this time around. Also, it depends on who's out there calculating the costs as well. I'm not kidding you, ask Mr. Martin. When I'm out there, I bring in more money than the average, the other people do.
Well, then, I guess you're standing out there all day.
No, because I do go through and I itemize, and I check it off on the sheet.
Of course you do.
I know, that's me. Mr. Martin will tell you, when I brought the money in to him, he looked at me like-
But also, no charging.
That's it.
Cash or check?
Check.
Cash or check? People come in, "Oh, I don't have my checkbook with me, send me a bill."
Nope.
And then it takes us two, three, four, five months sometimes to collect on it.
Go home?
No.
Get your checkbook.
Now, what I have the-
Is that written on the-
No cash, strictly check. And if they want to give me cash, I say, "Give the cash to the person behind you," and that person writes a check for theirs and yours. I don't want no cash at all. They put me out.
I don't think, I don't think you can do, say, not say cash.
You can't not accept cash.
Cash is illegal tender.
Yeah.
And I guess what, Jen, you'd be out there.
No, I'd be like, "You can't do it, no, sorry, no, no."
I had no problem with people doing that. Here's 20 bucks, okay, I'll add it to the check and-
Yeah, but my thing is, I was, no.
No billing.
We can't allow them to charge.
No.
I'm sorry, you don't have cash or check? Sorry.
No. Me, it was strictly check only. I didn't do any cash at all last year. Strictly check. If you only had cash, then pay the money to the person behind you, and they'll write you a larger check.
Time out.
Yep.
If our, if our protocol is that we accept cash or checks, and that's what we're saying, that's what we need to do.
He never said we accept cash.
We never accept cash.
Nope. Nope.
Chris was saying it says, "Accept cash."
It says, well, on the bottom thing, it says cash or check.
It does.
It does say cash.
It doesn't say check.
Okay.
It says cash or check. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, I'm going back to that, if it's saying that-
All I'm saying, if I look at that sheet, and they look at that sheet, that's probably posted on our website.
Yes.
Okay?
I took it off.
Okay, let's update it and take the word cash off it.
Do I need to make a new motion to update this thing?
I just make a direction to-
I didn't put any prices on because I didn't have them.
Right. So, it won't hurt that if we're just requiring checks only.
Checks.
Check or money order.
Yeah, you can do that.
Check or money order.
Checks, no money orders.
Why not?
Because if they write a bad check, then we turn over the treasure and he's-
Not everybody, not everybody nowadays has a checking account, so we need to be fair. If you, you know, you're gonna go, if we're not gonna accept cash, which-
But you're gonna have to know what the cost is of what you're throwing out.
Well, they do, it's all written right here.
I understand that, but if they miscalculate-
Yeah, they always put it in the lower category.
They're always the lower.
I'm just saying, we need to have another form of payment if it's, it can't just be check. I'm just saying, it needs to be some other form.
Firstborn child?
No. It costs more than some money. But, again, I think, you know, we can put down check and money order. I think it's just another form versus just a check, that's all. Because we're not taking cash, we're not taking credit cards or debit cards, and I mean, majority of the way things are paid for nowadays is debit card and credit cards. Very few people write checks anymore.
I write one maybe once every six months.
I can't remember the last time I wrote one.
Because your wife does also, right?
No, everything gets paid online. Everything gets paid online, you know?
Does anybody even carry cash anymore?
Yeah, I don't.
And we don't do online checking in my house. Everything is-
What's wrong with you?
Everything is done by check.
I don't even get statements anymore.
Well, we don't do anything online.
All right, well, the last thing you have is executive session. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Clause A, Paragraph 1, dealing with employee disciplinary action.
Anybody need to do a roll call?
Roll call.
And I believe the individual is the fire chief, and he has the right to determine who goes into executive session and who doesn't. Does the fire chief have any-
He's a representative.
But he can also say who he, who he's gonna let in. It's all about him, so.
I was not under the impression that was disciplinary action. I thought we were looking into a complaint.
And that could be potential disciplinary action, if it's a complaint.
Well, then, if it's gonna be that way, then we need both sides here. You can't talk about one person and not talk about another.
Who's saying we're talking about the other one? You're addressing a complaint against them, and are you gonna do disciplinary action based upon a complaint? That's what you're doing.
So, just send us into executive, and we'll take it.
We'll take it from-
As it comes. Sound there?
Hey, it's majority rules, so it's a roll call vote.
I understand. Call the roll.
I asked for a roll call vote already.
What, going back to what Chris was saying, what is?
Well, we have Mr. Amal. I don't know if he's here for the executive session, or if he's here for something else.
Chief, I'd ask for him to sit in, so.
So, chief, do you want him to go into executive session with you or not?
If he wishes to be in executive session, I will allow. I ask that otherwise, it is only the board, myself, and my attorney, which means excusing Mr. Martin and Ms. Lynch.
Well, I didn't see this gentleman's name on any of the-
Oh, he has right to counsel.
I didn't say he didn't have right to counsel. I'm just saying, on the letters on one side, and the letters on one side, I didn't see his name involved in any of it. So, I'm asking, why is he even here?
Why is he here?
I guess, chief, I guess the question is, what are you asking from firefighter Amal?
His name's not on any of the complaints or any of the statements made by, given to us to review.
The statement was made by one of the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting. The comment had to do with the alleged perception of the department.
What, do you want to call the whole department in?
Excuse me. I had invited several members of the department to come in support of the department based on the comment that was made. I have since instructed all those individuals not to come. Mr. Amal did show and has showed interest in wishing to be here. I am allowing him, if he chooses to be here, to sit in and listen to this, but this was based on a comment made by a selectman at the last meeting.
When I recall from the last select board meeting, we were asked to have a, go to a session with the people, and we said, "No, if they have a problem, they will file a fireway complaint." We're not going up to-
And so, at that meeting, one of the selectmen had pointed out that a matter with the school had not been addressed.
And it hasn't.
No, excuse me?
It hasn't.
No, it hasn't, not to my knowledge. My understanding was it was still to be addressed, and nothing has come of it yet. That's part of what my understanding of tonight was.
And to my understanding, that's what we're gonna talk about because-
To address the alleged allegations of what's going on in the department. I've had many members of the department approach me after watching the last meeting with some serious concern about what the board has said.
Well, if there's no complaint from the department, I'm not gonna address anything about the department. The only thing I'm gonna address is those letters that I was given about a complaint.
Okay, so we can address that.
That's what I want to address. I'm not gonna do a he said, she said, or do a popularity contest. If the people that are in those letters were here, that would be fine, but anybody else, I don't see a reason for them to be here.
It's my first, though, Mr. Chairman.
Not the way I read Massachusetts law.
I'm leaving that up to him, should he choose to, because he has expressed an interest to me, but that is my decision, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I don't want to say anything to violate an executive session, but I don't know what he can testify to the incident that we're gonna talk about if he wasn't there.
He didn't testify to the incident.
Well, that's all we're gonna talk about tonight.
Okay. And again, it's up to him if he chooses to stay or go. I, I, he showed interest, and I'm fine with it. He should choose to stay.
All right. As to what we said the last time, if somebody's got a complaint, they use the proper procedure and file the complaint, and we will follow it in accordance with Massachusetts General Law. We're not going out and sitting there and listening to a bunch of complaint sessions, or bitch sessions, whatever you want to call them, I don't care. We're not doing that.
I understand.
There are rules with unions, and there's rules with non-union people, we will follow those rules.
Okay.
Mr. Chair-
If you can follow the rules, Mr. Chairman, then follow the rules. I made the statement that I'm fine with him staying, it's my right, and if we're gonna continue with this, let's continue with it.
Well, I didn't read the open meeting law that way, but if the other two want him to stay, they can let him stay, because I said, "You and your representative." And you have in a representative here, an attorney, and we're gonna talk about that incident, and that's all we're gonna talk about.
Understood.
It's up to you, too, now.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and a roll call vote?
Silva, aye.
Sexton, aye.
Joyce, aye.